You may well welcome up to the uh, beginning of the town board work session. Uh, please turn off all cell phones, pagers, and electronic devices. Uh, we have assistive listening devices available for the hearing area. And everybody please stand in front of the reams.
The flag is raised in the name of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you can see, Mr. Robert is not presently as of this Tuesday absences on vacation. Next, we'd like to ask for a little example of what's happening. Thank you. Side one of the agenda is the general approval.
I'd like to add Parks and Rec under mine.
Anything else? Motion approved.
Second.
Okay.
Aye aye.
Okay, next move on to the abstract, Mr. Vance.
Take a motion to approve regular abstract of terms number seven hundred and eighty-five to nine hundred and twenty, and recommend payment in amount of three hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and sixty-one cents, plus supposed audit of fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Carrie? Next move on to approve over minutes from the March twenty-fifth meeting.
Take a motion to approve the March twenty fifth uh, regular town board meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Carrie? Um, next item on the agenda, appropriate concerns. Chief, anything?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffy?
Would you like me to go now?
Um, sure. Any questions anyway?
Okay. I have two budget revisions for twenty nineteen. And I'd like to ask for your approval. The first one is in the Sewer Department, SS one. I'd like to uh, request to move one thousand eight hundred dollars from the treatment and disposal contractual budget to the treatment and disposal gasoline budget. They had to purchase um, a large amount of diesel fuel.
So, second. All favor.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. The next one is moving funding from one medical insurance line to another medical insurance line. What had happened in January of twenty nineteen, we had seven employees who switched to a less expensive health insurance, and it's paid out of a different budget. So it's merely taking the funding from the budget they were in over to the budget now where the expenses. They actually saved the town over eleven thousand dollars for these seven employees.
So, second. All favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie?
The last thing I'd like to mention is that we filed our twenty eighteen New York State A U D, which is the annual update document, on April first, it was filed by our auditors, Joshua and Malachi. There is a copy on our website, as well as a hard copy in the office.
There you go.
Nope.
Alright. Uh, Mr. Trainee, did you? Or Dashman, did you?
Just had to be a gentleman.
Okay. Yeah?
Yes, the water department has received a uh, grant, and I would like you to purchase a, another pickup truck for that, and the rest of the line can be put towards water irons.
Need any action tonight, or?
No.
Sorry about since this been?
Yeah, just asking, yeah.
One of them.
Okay, thank you. Just here. Bob? No, nothing. Tom?
Uh, there's a consent order relative to an Article seven proceeding that we're gonna ask the board to approve. It's related to the Santa Rosa case versus the Town of Lewiston and the other defendants, the tax issue case, and the the agreement has been to an assessed value of five hundred, two thousand, five hundred dollars. This has been a matter that's been discussed between the attorney's office and also Linda Johnson, and we're asking for the board to approve the ability for the attorneys to sign off on that consent order.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, that's all I have.
Okay.
Oh yes, I'm sorry, uh clerk.
Jack, you want to propose the finance that you need?
No, thank you.
Um, okay, next item is L P Realty, Mr. Stephen.
So, um, as the board is likely aware, there's been a letter proposed by L P Realty to change the current bond structure, the amount of the bond relative to sidewalks that are going in at that, at that development. They, the proposal essentially, I don't have the letter right in front of me, but it's essentially to, to lower the amount of the value of the bond uh, to, to a proposed number that they had. This is something, um, really it's on the agenda tonight, really if the board wants to consider that proposal. It's not something the board can do by vote right now, it'll have to be an amendment to the contract, so there'll need to be a new, uh, a new written amendment to the contract. And what I would suggest is that the board consider whether or not they want us to move forward with that, and if so, uh, there's been a proposal to limit that bond to, I think, eight thousand dollars, I believe is what it was. And it was previously a forty-four thousand dollar bond, I believe, or maybe a forty thousand dollar bond. And I would recommend that the board, um, speak with their engineers to just determine how much it might actually be, to make sure that those sidewalks ultimately get put in, what would the cost of putting those would in, if the board is inclined to move forward with the reduction of that bond. And then if so, um, you'd need to reach an agreement in terms of what that would be, and, and we can make an adjustment, a written adjustment to the contract.
So what he's saying, he, there's eight thousand dollars left on sidewalks to be completed, and that's why the bond is at eight thousand, is what I'm, how I'm reading that.
From what I can tell, um, their current bond is, is it either forty or forty-four. His suggestion is that it may only cost eight thousand to finish the sidewalks.
That's his estimate, yeah.
But that appears to be his estimate, I would, I would recommend that the board speak with their engineers about what that actual cost may be, and, and move forward from that point.
Do you have any comment on that?
I, I do recall seeing an email, uh, that, that Mr. Masaro had proposed, use the same per square foot price that we calculated to come up with a, with a forty thousand dollar bond, you just with, I think it, don't quote me, about maybe three hundred feet left, using that same square footage came up with about eight thousand, so if the board would like, I'll, I'll just double check that, and you will be able to act on that at the next board meeting, if that's okay?
Maybe I'll attempt to go out and check and see if that's actually?
Tim and I have discussed it in concept, and we, we agree that having some type of security still is good. And the eight thousand, I, I'm pretty certain is right, but let me just double check, and then we'll, we'll have the report back at the next meeting.
Uh, who ever require a bond that's a little in excess of the anticipated cost?
The original forty was, uh, I think the same square footage probably will be, I think will be will put the town in a comfortable position. It won't be any less than that, I can tell you for sure. And if otherwise, would be in his interest to finish it.
Yeah, that's, that's what my goal was, make sure he's not at the end and saying, well, it might be just cheaper to lose a bond.
It'll be, if, if, if that were to occur, then we'd have enough to put the sidewalks in.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah.
We're protecting all of that.
That's the idea, is to protect that. I wouldn't expect there to be any, any reservation about putting in that, but we wanna make sure the town's protected in any event.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Who else? None of them there? Tom?
Oh no, no, there's no thousands.
Next thing is uh, mobile app for the used to use for? Chief?
Yes, I uh, actually was able to get another cost which is lower, and actually puts me below the twenty-five hundred threshold for three verbal quotes. It's the same company that I presented last time to the board, so I guess, uh, since it's under, it's my discretion. So what I'm looking for board approval to, to do is, since I don't have the money in my budget, is to approve the money, the purchase for this out of H ninety-seven.
H ninety-seven.
In talking with Jackie for, for her public safety. Uh, with the understanding as well that we do still have equipment that has to be auctioned as well, she's gonna try to keep track of what comes in for that, I don't know. I, I imagine that it's gonna be at least enough to cover this, but either way. That's uh, what also is coming down the road, that I agreed that we took into consideration for this, so what I'm looking for is uh, an approval for two thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars.
What was the purpose again, Jack, uh, chief, was it for the?
For the
Contract with the developer?
There's no real contract. They're gonna invoice us, it's a year by year, and we can stop at any time. Um,
It's not in the mobile app company?
It's, it's for the development of the mobile app and support of the mobile app, so it'll be that. And that's what we agreed on when we talked to the board and talked to Steve, about taking the money out of there, and then, just so the board understands, come budget time, I'm looking for that much to continue that if we want to at that point.
What's the name of the company?
So I would just have it included, and uh, it's called thepoliceapp.com. So the police app, it's custom police apps.
Make a motion to approve two thousand, four hundred and forty-nine dollars come out of H ninety-seven for the purpose of the police, uh, the custompoliceapp.com.
Second. All favor. But what, just, uh, Mr. Stephen, have you said to agree that H ninety-seven?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was gonna, I was gonna, could I have one more thing? Uh, so if we could just add that.
So to approve?
If there is a contract, I don't believe there is one. But if we could, if they do present one or send one, you, I would make it continue upon.
Make an amendment.
Is second. H ninety-seven is appropriate?
Yeah, it can be, it can be paid for by H ninety-seven.
Yes.
This was the same app that was talked about at the March twenty-fifth meeting.
Correct.
All favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wish you good.
Thank you.
Uh, cell tower unit, Mr. Jacoby.
The uh, county wants to build a radio tower on our, um, on Dave's property out here. And uh, everyone thinks it's a good idea. And what the, what the tower is used for is radio communications for the police and also for all uh, fire companies. And where we stand right now, there's several areas that are dead for the radios, so as you, one could imagine, police and fire without a radio or call for help, call for an ambulance, call for a helicopter, anything they might need. It's uh, it's imperative that they have coverage throughout the county. And it's particularly home for us, because our fire company is our police department. So to that end, uh, Stephen Morris, uh, recused yourself?
We did, we, we submitted a letter to the supervisor indicating we have a conflict of interest, we'll be recusing ourselves from any involvement in the, in the matter.
And we've, uh, as discussed before, we've hired, uh, David McGavin and Grim, who for everyday purposes, essentially, that firm, and he's gonna work out for us, so uh, it's moving forward, the next thing that's gonna happen with it's going to the environmental committee. So I will attend that meeting, and hopefully we can move it along so that things can be built in time and there. So all I got.
Do you know if it's gonna be going to the tower committee? Do you have any comment on that?
We had a sequence of events that we talked about last time, I can't honestly say what the order is. David's.
No, it would typically go to the tower committee before the lady board.
Right. So you guys will need a, an approval to hire?
Right. Oh. I'll make that motion.
Second. All favor.
They'll, they thought Davis was trying to get your attention.
Oh. Couple others. One was what tower and how it's built. There was, there was an issue with that, did you talk to?
We talked to them, and uh, there's, there's two stuff, it's not that uh,
It's not the monopole.
It's not the monopole.
It's not the monopole.
And you aren't gonna have those big cables going out into your yard where it'd have to be fenced in. It's gotta have a minimum.
The other issue they didn't get back to us was, was rent.
Who?
That's an issue they're addressing and paying without the mounted fire company, with all the other towers.
Yeah.
I would imagine Mr. Perlin would be.
Well, they, when they left, when we hit our last meeting, if I might interject, that was the discussion between, going, it's supposed to take place between Mr. Perlin and the county attorney, whatever.
Yeah, okay.
So that was a consideration, but they didn't have anything as, as of yet.
Cause they were, cause the last two meetings I had was when they came in, looked and seen, and they started them back to see which area of the lot they wanted. Right now, at this time, it would be, they'll be placed behind a chief's building.
They seem very cooperative, they're, they're actually.
Oh yeah, no, because we have the setup, and it may benefit his building and us with that.
Well, it definitely will benefit this building, because there's no radio coverage in this building.
No, I don't mean for that.
Oh.
I mean for, they have a generator that they need for this radio tower.
Yes.
Their generator can also power your auxiliary building.
Ah.
Right? That's what they're doing at the fire hall.
Yeah. So this is not a bad idea?
Yes. So this is why this process is gonna take.
Our engineer heard that, right?
So now I have, I have.
You heard what?
I have a generator that's sitting there, and hooked up, so that may be a benefit to us too.
Okay.
So that was the one issue, they've never responded back to anything to this.
So I don't, I don't know who would handle that issue, I mean.
Mr. Perlin.
Mr. Perlin could negotiate that. You'd have to get him that information as well.
You know, the other thing you mentioned when, when we did speak to, was the fact that um, there was, there was no opportunity for a co-location in any other, any other commercial cell tower.
Oh no.
So that's one of the reasons why the location of the highway department was.
I can just tell you that, right now, for me personally, I've lived in this town for most of my whole life, and I wouldn't care if it was a purple tower that went a hundred yards into the ceiling, up from here, that was visible, that is something that we need so bad, it's an office for safety issues. One of my guys or girls could die because of this, we can literally not talk to each other, if one is in a backyard of someone's house at certain places on a ridge road, and the other one is in the front, we can't talk every day. That's a problem.
It's a public safety problem.
Yeah. So I, I, I just appreciate the, the, the board's enthusiastic, enthusiasm to help with this, because I can tell you that there's very few things that I feel this passionately about, but this is a problem. And it's a problem for us, and it's something that I've been hounding them for, for over a couple of years now, so I mean, I'm just glad that, that we're working with them, and I think everything can go in a positive direction, because whatever we have to do to make this work, it's that important. The other.
Make a motion, second.
Do we need two resolutions, one to direct the supervisor to sign, or can do it all at once?
First, we need to approve the attorney, right? With the approval of the attorney.
Yeah, authorize Steve to sign.
Right, so do we have a motion to approve the?
Yeah.
Attorney?
Make a motion, second.
All favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Make a motion to authorize the supervisor to sign. Second.
Exactly, and that Wednesday to sign that.
All favor. Sign, I can be opposed. Carrie's? We'll sign that. Correct. Alright. Next, um, resolution for the unified solar permit, Mr. Morial.
Yes. Um, I'd propose to adopt a standardized solar permit process for the Town of Lewiston. And I'd like to read into the minutes, whereas the Town of Lewiston currently requires residents to obtain a billing permit for the installation of solar panels pursuant to municipal billing code section three sixty dash six, and whereas the Town of Lewiston code enforcement officer has advised the town board of the Town of Lewiston that the New York State uniform process is consistent, compatible with the town zoning code and permitting practices. And whereas the town board supports the use of solar energy as a renewable energy source. Now therefore, as hereby resolved by the town board of the Town of Lewiston, that Town of Lewiston hereby fully and formally adopts the New York State Unified Solar Permit Process for New York dash sun, hop, sun solar power in New York, and establishes the permit fee at fifty dollars plus two dollars per one thousand of construction cost. Further resolve the town board regular session to, in being, does hereby authorize and direct the town supervisor or town clerk of the Town of Lewiston to execute such other additional documents as being required for, to perfect the resolution herein.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry, who seconded it?
I did, I did. Who's gotta go?
Yes, now I got Parks and Rec under mine. Yes. Okay. I'd like to declare a dump truck full of metal, full of metal to be accessed and give permission to the Parks Department to sell this at a scrap mill yard. This metal serves no purpose in the town, it was discarded after cleaning the asphalt building. We need to make the motion.
Are we declaring the dump truck, or the, the access metal?
How?
Is it both?
No, just the metal.
That's the picture, that's just, Stephen. The enthusiasm is dropped upon the. Is this the?
Second. All favor.
Aye.
Am I correct that the, is that what you mentioned?
Oh yes. For discussion, I should know better. Sorry.
Am I correct that the revenue from that sale would go to the general fund?
Yes. All favor.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The next one, please declare the following vehicles accessed and allow the Parks Department to auction off at Auctions International. A nineteen ninety-eight Ford F-150 and a two thousand and one Chevrolet 1500.
Do I need to read the numbers, or? Second. All favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie?
And the third, approve for employment the following parks laborers seasonal. Read them, read the parts of the police, okay. Thomas Kennedy thirteen fifty per hour, Austin Bar thirteen dollars per hour, Joel, Joel Fleego eleven seventy-five per hour, and Dol, Donald Ellander thirteen dollars per hour.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
Let's start in Dave's.
Yeah, when is the starting date?
It's gonna vary, we're gonna, we're gonna make it tomorrow, but these guys are gonna stagger their way in once they get out of college, and Tom, Tom is a retired gentleman, so whenever the grass starts growing, he usually helps us with mowing the lawn more.
And all these fires were listed and approved in a nineteen like. That's all I got. Do you get approval on that? I'll be next one. Alright, um, Mr. Morial? I'll say.
I'll say.
Okay, internship agreement with N triple C, Mr. Guyman.
With pleasure. I will move to approve the internship agreement with Niagara County Community College to move ahead with our videotaping of our town board minutes, part of the meetings, and to work with other students as time progresses. I will not read the whole document, it will be online, I move to approve with delight.
Second. Any discussion?
I just noticed that there's no address, there's no address for uh, N triple C here. I imagine, do they have, do they have an office or something that we can already contact it, or?
They, they can fill, when we send it to them, to, to sign, they can.
I would like to thank Professor James Ramonza for all this work, and his grandson for all the assistance they've given us. It's been a long, slow process, but we finally reached our goal. Uh, we, we do have an address on the top of that first paragraph.
It's, it's for the notices.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's, it's in the center.
All favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carrie, thank you, Mr. Guyman. USDA property access request, Mr. Stephen.
Um, that was, you guys may have seen, there was something that the board had approved last year with regard to the USDA going on certain properties owned by the town to set traps for uh, an invasive fly species that affects cherry trees. We've reviewed that documentation again, and it's, it's, meets our approval in terms of any type of tort issues or anything along those lines, so if you'd like to approve it, you may.
I've got a question on that. Is this something they're gonna use all these pesticides? I'm not sure, they don't give you a lot of, but all these pesticides being used, this warrior two with Xeon technology, the pesticide is extremely toxic to fish, aquatic organisms, organisms, and toxic to wildlife. This product is highly toxic to bees exposed to direct treatment or residue of blooming crops or weeds. Do not apply this product, because the wind's gonna blow it to other crops, or bees are, bees are visiting the treated area. I mean, I'm not sure if they're just gonna go in and do this, I don't know if they can even chat with some of these pesticides, they, you know, these.
I don't know the answer to those questions, Mr. Morial. I can tell you, from your lawyer's perspective, we were just asked to to review the, do a cursory review of the documentation under the understanding that it was approved last year by the board. And specifically with regard to issues about, um, who would be responsible in the event of negligence accidents relative to the federal employees that might be outlandish in that regard, but in terms of the issues you've just raised, it's not something that your attorney's office has looked into in any, any respect.
Well, they said they found a lot of them along the river, and they just tell you not to use it here, a lot of water, but I guess they're trained in using these, you know, these, whatever it is.
I'd like to, hold it up.
I'd, I'd like to hold it.
Hold it and, um,
Get some, how can we get some help at all?
Because the uh, document that the property owner, Hope, fills out just says they own the property, they set the trap, trap is notification necessary and permission to place traps. It doesn't talk about spraying as far as this document, it's missing enough of that.
Well, but then though, what they say is uh, ask prior to treatment, remove any laundry left outside the yard, close all doors and windows, move on the barbecue lawn, throw it at the doors. It doesn't sound like that's something contained in the trap, it sounds like something they're spraying all over the.
I think I, I think I remember last year, didn't somebody come in and present something?
They did.
Maybe we get the same person, I think somebody came and presented something prior to them doing this last year.
They were the, I think they were the yellow traps were placed all around, along the parkway.
Yeah, they came in and told, and told the board exactly what they were doing, and then were able to ask questions.
And, and I think with any pesticide, it has the possibility of spreading with the wind, as we're talking about the flies that land on it and maybe carry it away. I think just by its nature, it's a toxic substance, so I think they probably listened to their own attorneys, they're giving all the warnings that were necessary, so.
Rob, do you want to make a call?
Yeah, sure, love to. Cause I don't see why they would attach all these other pesticides in there to not use them.
Yeah.
So that makes me believe they're gonna be using all these, and they said it's near the river. So I don't know how close to the river they're talking about, or the, for the bees itself, we got a problem with bees dying off as it is, but.
Farming bees.
Yeah, we're, we're farming them, we're exactly.
So say a tree is to one group of farmers, and we'll, we'll kill it in combination for another group of farmers, literally. So.
Alright, I won't make that call.
Sorry, we're getting shot when you go to the garden on, on Tuesday, you can also bring this up.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'll bring this, yeah.
And I'm with the call tomorrow.
Good.
Alright, that's, that's all.
No action.
Do we need to tear it off, or do we just take the action?
Take that action.
Alright, um, I did miss one item on the agenda, the re-establishment of the town hall renovation thing, Mr. Guyman.
Uh, we've talked about this at budget time, we've talked about it, uh, at various meetings, and uh, I'd like to propose the town hall renovation committee be, consist of town board members to town clerk, Don Garofinco, town engineer, Bob Landon, fire inspector, Pat Martin, and building inspector, Tim, the masters, and I would like to be one of the board members. Is there somebody else who would like to volunteer? Don't know who I have else. Oh, Martin? Deputy supervisor, but uh, that's fine. No, we could, we could all attend, you know, we're not.
If it's a public meeting, we can all attend, if there's, uh, if there's more than two of us, yeah, so, well, with the.
Oh, yeah, you know, in that sense, okay. Well.
Are you making that motion?
Donna looked it up and it said two town board members, and, um, let's proceed with it with the deputy supervisor, and if we have to revisit it, we can. So I would make the motion for myself and for Bill Conrad.
So it should, um, the resolution should say that it's an ad hoc committee that serves at the pleasure of the board with no additional compensation?
Correct. Is there a second?
Second.
Correct, has one more, but did you have something you wanted to?
Yeah, uh, real quick, just for the board's information, Mr. Daggett just came in. He's got, um, he lives on the corner of Hurst Court and, um, Raymond Drive. He's had some damage to his property, uh, during the tree removal on the side of his house from Angry Beaver. He has been in contact with Angry Beaver, he just wanted, he's going to present you guys with letters and damn stuff just in case he doesn't find out. In the past, um, with Mr. Robert and I, Angry Beaver hasn't come to a satisfactory resolution with the resident. We've basically said that we've given a withhold payment, so, uh, Mr. Daggett will give you the, the damage estimates and, and that stuff. Again, he's working with Angry Beaver right now, just wants to keep it on file with us.
He said it all.
And Angry Beaver's insured also, right?
Yes, they are.
Yeah, he said he didn't want to run it through his insurance, that he wanted to, uh, cut a check for it, but, uh, I just want to make sure that it's followed through, you know? It's almost a thousand dollars with the damage that the tree poked, uh, two holes in the roof and damaged a twenty-four section foot of gutter.
Sorry for your inconvenience, hopefully we can resolve it through term extension.
Thank you, sir.
Again, generally on our final review before we would issue any payment for that, that would be part of it, since this isn't resolved, we're just not going to issue those checks, okay?
Taking the front park off.
No report.
No report. And approval to the floor. Wait, does everyone sign up?
I'm, I'm yelling name on here.
Do you want to just?
Well, I can, I can yell. A question on the, uh, the police radio tower, we can't co-locate it with another tower. Would anybody have an interest in co-locating with our tower?
We talked about that a little bit, and, uh, there, there are several reasons not to put, uh, cell equipment on it.
Okay.
We, we, a big part of it was lose some control over, the county would lose some control over their own tower. And, uh, that foot in the door, you know, this year it's one horizon, we're only going to put one thing on. And next thing you know, we've got this monstrosity and it's, it's fruit and our own capability.
Understood. And then the other point I had, I drive past this every day, it's a sweet little building that has a sign in front of it from seven AM to nine PM. And right beside it, it says, private property, no trespassing. Nobody has a clue with whatever money we put into that nice little toilet there at the end of Fletcher Road. Are we going to put a sign up at some point?
The supervisor I discussed this just recently, because we're waiting for the preserve, but we may have to move ahead on our own in some way.
Just nail up one of those universals.
Greenway put money involved, involved with it, and they have to approve it, they have problems. That's the other problem.
Also, it's not open till May first.
Not open till May first.
May first is a little more complicated, there's no heat in the building for water lines, so usually May first is the shooting date for all the parks.
I have a question.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Just in the background, um, with regards to this tower, is it going to be at the highway drive? Okay, what was the purpose of putting the tower up in Upper Mountain? Wasn't that for coverage, for fire and police?
It doesn't affect anything below because of the escarpment, so it might have been their purpose, but that's a county engineered program that they've got as far as the placement of the towers.
Yeah.
So there's gaps in it, and I think that they've addressed them, kind of tried to address them one at a time. When the system went in, it didn't cover.
That, that was the bill of goods, chief, that, that, that tower was going to go in there and it was going to be, cover all kinds of things.
For which one?
The one on Upper Mountain. It was supposed to have long ranging, uh, range for the firemen.
And it duck, it did improve things as far as the, as far as I know, as far as the purpose that it had. The problem is, without that one below the ridge, because of the ridge, the way the ridge works, it wouldn't matter, there's nothing that you could put up there because there's a shadow that that casts a radio type shadow.
And that's basically what.
So you would have to put it, to, to accomplish what you're talking about, it would almost have to be.
And basically, chief, if you go back and look, in fact, we've got it on tape, that if you go back and look at that meeting, that's one of the things that the residents were saying.
I wasn't at the meeting.
Yeah, that's one of the things the residents were saying, they're saying, you, you're not going to get full coverage because you've got that block there.
Well, they should probably pay them to do their consulting then, because they're correct. They're correct. And they, and the problem is that we knew that there was some sacrifice that they made between when they bid the first system out, coverage that they had in the second one, or wherever they accepted, it was a county program, and they knew that they would have to add to it at one point or another, which I think that that was, that seemed to begin with, but that's what they decided. So now they're filling in the gaps where they have.
So this is going to cover everything, there's not going to be another tower put up, maybe in Ransville? To cover Ransville?
I don't think so, I don't know. All I know is that it's going to solve our problem. It'll solve the problem that I have. I don't know that it's, I don't think that they're planning anything beyond that, I think they identified if they could get something below the ridge and down here, that it'd be able to cover the problems that we have down here. I don't know where else they're having problems in other towns.
Chief, well, they could say at the meeting that something below the escarpment, they would be able to communicate with the wall set in.
Right, because they have to talk, the tower has to talk to each other.
They want to come down here and then they go, and some people, that's what, that's the term.
Right, yes.
Uh, will the town own this tower?
No.
No, county.
The county will own it, so are we going to get any kind of money?
Yes, that's what's being discussed, it's not.
And just, just so, uh, you're aware also, but the, the compensation in for the board, they, uh, they do provide us with equipment. So there's a trade there as well, so we already are receiving the benefit from them in that respect as well, and that'll be worked out separately when I get to the, to my attorney.
Anyone else in the audience care to speak? Okay, if not, then, um, do you have any announcements? Town offices will be closed Friday, April nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, and observed from this Friday. Upcoming meetings, zoning board will meet on April eleventh at six thirty. Historic preservation committee will meet at, on April sixteenth at six PM. The environmental commission will be on April sixteenth at seven PM. Planning board will meet on April eighteenth at six thirty PM. The regular town board meeting will be April twenty-fifth at six PM.
For the ambulance? The senior advisor committee will meet on April twenty-ninth at one PM at the senior site. It's just to have the members to meet and greet and chat. I'm meeting with Mrs. Glasgow tomorrow at about ten fifteen to over a couple documents in the guy's senior site.
Anybody else?
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, you got a second? All in favor?